That today I officially put in my resignation letter to the town of Winchester. Um, that my final working day will be um, the first Friday in January. Uh, but so in uh, my original last planning board meeting was going to be December thirteenth. So now it's going to be December twentieth, which is that's the last one in twenty twenty two. Um, so I will not be here for any planning board meetings in twenty twenty three.
Or twenty four or twenty five.
Yeah, uh, yeah, either yes, all of those as well, yes. Um, but um, that that leads into the other update, which is that because I'm leaving in that time. Right now, um, the highest priority for me is to um, get compliance with MBTA, um, three, you know, section three A zoning, um. So that is just so, oh, Brian, um, also is there? Um. I was not able to get in touch with Brian Minter at the time, but um, do we need the assistant town engineer this evening?
He's right there.
No, I'm saying, do we need, do, do we, uh, is he, um? I don't necessarily want.
We welcome his presence, but we do not require it, I don't think.
Not for tonight's on agenda, okay?
Yeah.
Um, so I guess there is this time at the end here that we would be talking about um, planner transition. But it just in terms of an update, um, you know, very quickly is that the compliance tool for, there is the compliance tool for communities has um, has come out. And it's gonna ha- it has like a GIS portion of it that includes like our specific municipality. And all like it excludes all the sensitive land that doesn't count towards, um, you know, the area. So they basically created these tools to see, you know, is is the area large enough? Is it, is it near enough? Um, uh, you know, the train station. So it does all that. And then there's also a series of like a zoning checklist of, you know, potential of how this could work. So that that's what the compliance model is, uh, we we and and that's again, just to repeat, that is the highest priority right now is for me to understand, um, all I need to do for that compliance model to become compliant for the following uh, year. Uh, in um, and then with the idea of actually doing that zoning change a year from now, so next fall, fall of twenty three. Um, so yeah, that's the large update in terms of what's going to be, oh, here comes Kurt, by the way. Um, in terms of what's going to be the highest priority or what is the highest priority moving, moving forward? There's obviously a lot of other transition stuff that we'll talk, I guess, a lot later. Um, but that was it. So um, for the moment, uh, back to you, DM.
Okay, uh, I just wanna get Kurt to verbally acknowledge his presence. Hey Kurt, can you scream out, I'm Kurt Spring?
I'm Kurt Spring, present.
Excellent, thank you. Um, so, uh, are there any other updates from any board members?
I I just had one thought, um, a carryover from last week when we discussed the uh, industrial district. And it was something that I was thinking about, um, but I did, I didn't quite bring myself to to mention it. And uh, this is when we were thinking about the size of the buildings. And it just, I was just thinking this past week, uh, and wondering whether we could, whether we could go very tall and have kinda like a glass and steel kind of look. And and have kind of a stark, um, juxtaposition, uh, kind of like Cogly Square or something like that. Um, and it was just, it's just something that I thought about. I didn't, uh, I didn't bring it up last time, but it was something that I've been thinking about. Um, and then there was one other uh, thought, and this goes way back to when we had uh, Jay Tollerman in. Uh, and I just wanted to share that my, my distinct impression was that he and uh, uh, my read of the conversation was that they're looking for some help. Or at least he he mentioned uh, homeowner relief uh, quite a bit. And uh, the way I read it was that that the builder and developer community is looking for some relief from the planning board. Um, and I think there are probably ways that we can give them relief, uh, but it's certainly something that we need to think about. Um, and I I wanted to ask Brian, I know that we have a list of developers and this kind of also dovetails in with with kind of my, I had agreed to do a a piece reaching out to uh, the development community in conjunction with the historical commission. Um, and I'm wondering if if Brian, I can follow up with you, you know, regarding the list of developers that we have. So we can think about what kind of outreach we might do. And once we solidify our thoughts and vision regarding the industrial district, we might wanna reach out to developers specifically, um, you know, regarding that. So, um, and before you go, so I was wondering if I could, I could maybe reach out to you, uh, and and review that list at some point. Those are just my thoughts. Um, and again, I I know I had asked for this, this time. I'll, I'll, I'll just add another piece, uh, having listened to D E B's, uh, my read of it was that uh, we keep it short and uh, if we have to move on, we have to move on. But I appreciate the opportunity to kinda reflect last week and and bring it forward.
So there's.
That's it.
Yeah, um, so thank you, Nick. I think we have to be careful in this update section that we aren't. So we can't really have a discussion because it's not on the agenda. The specific items that you have brought up are not on our agenda.
Right.
We can't actually discuss it. So if you want to make time, let me know ahead of time so I can put it on the agenda. Cause otherwise.
I see.
You are, you are throwing stones into the ocean and.
Right, I understand. Yeah, no, and uh, yeah, that's certainly not the, not the intent.
No, I understand.
But but you know, I I I do think of, you know, I'll think of something over the weekend. I'm like, I really wanna share that or I really wish I had brought it up or this or that. So maybe there's some, some way to, we'll figure, I guess we'll figure it out.
Yeah, what you can do is write it down, send it, um, send it at this point, you should probably just send it to me. We can talk about putting it on the agenda so that there was actually, uh, so we can notify people.
I see, sure.
Yeah, that's the key thing is we we need to have it in the agenda so that we not only meet open meeting law, but the actually people who are interested get to tune in.
Sure.
Um, so, um, Brian.
That's it for me, uh, but uh.
Okay. So any other, I have one short um, thing I wanna talk about and then we have to dive into minutes. Um, anyone else have anything they wanna bring up? I will take that as a no. Um, so there was a, uh, Brian, you know more about this than I, but I'll bring it up. Uh, there was a meeting discussing our beloved section three, five, two. Uh, bet- bet- a couple, about a week and a half ago, so this was after our last meeting, but before the holidays. Um, where um, legal came up with a particular interpretation of three, five, two, which I think, sorry, Brian's raising his finger.
Uh, three, five, five.
Three, five, five, I apologize. And I'm not gonna go into anymore, cause again, it's not on the agenda. But uh, the legal interpretation of three, five, five has really restricted what people can do on non-compliant lots. And so this is, and it 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 kind of goes against, um, it's against the run of play, as it were, what the town has been doing for the last long decades in terms of whether you need a special permit or a variance to do particular structures. So I'm hoping to bring legal in, um, to discuss this. But I think it's, it's of enough importance that we will want to address this, uh, at the next town meeting to um, to revise the zoning so that, um, well, this is something the planning board will have to discuss, but it has significant impacts. For example, if you wanna say build an ADU on a non-compliant, a non-conforming lot, not compliant, conforming. Anyway, so that's all I'll say about that, just the heads up that this is gonna come back. Um, and you may recall, we had, uh, when we met with the ZBA, uh, a couple of months ago, this section of our bylaws was under scrutiny, so.
So, so did they, did council come back with a memo or what?
No, no, this is verbal. I believe this was a discussion. And that's one of the things that I wanna discuss with council was to underst- to to have something in writing that it can be distributed to the board so that we can react to it.
What did they, what was the meeting? Who was there? I mean, what was that?
Uh, Brian, this was on a particular, it was, it was based on a particular property.
And yeah, it was, it was based upon a special permit and whether or not the special permit was supposed to be, or you know, if that was the correct uh, relief that it needed.
I see.
So, so, yeah.
Yeah, so there was, it wasn't, it was an actual thing in front of the building department, I believe, where this.
Okay.
So we will, yeah, so, um, oh, so that's coming up. So why don't we dive into the minutes? And I think we have four sets of minutes. Um, and uh, Brian, I know there was a correction that came from one of our, our loyal viewers on one of them. Did that get incorporated?
I did make note of it in my copy of the minutes, so when we get to that, I'll recognize it.
Okay, okay, thank you. So why don't we jump into this one?
Uh, so, so September sixth.
September sixth, twenty twenty two. Any comments, corrections, et cetera, on this one?
I just had one quick, there's I think one quick typo, um, down, Brian, in my comments, I think on Rocky Ledge. There's just an extra word in there and then, um, I think the spirit of all this said is generally fine, but um, let's see, yeah, it says concerns with going with from one buildable lot to three. I think it should just say concern with going from one buildable lot to three, so just one extra word in there. Just that with second.
Yeah, okay, strike the left.
Otherwise, I think it's.
Okay. Um. You've got.
That was my own, that was my only comment.
Okay, um, could you uh, make a note of that to Nancy?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, any other comments on this one?
I have.
Go ahead, Sally, please.
Um, so on page one, under Mr. Zakali at one C, the third line down is it says, um, let's see, um, identifies the necessary structure, necessary measures required to, oh, to take. Oh, I, now I misread it the first time. Okay, it identifies the necessary measures required to take to be compliant with the law. Okay, and then at the end of that sentence, so following on, that in turn will allow the town to apply for the one-stop for growth funds, funds plural. One-stop is a, a clearinghouse kind of a thing, so it would be multiple funds that we would be applying to. Brian, am I right about that? Yes, okay, good. And then, um, just checking. Oh, let's see. Oh, I have a question, um, on the top of page two, Mr. Manter's comments. Um, so it's like, let me see, one, two, three, four, one, two, three, four, fifth line down. It starts with the word, don't anticipate any blasting. And then in parentheses, consider having a written procedure ready in case blasting is needed. I'm curious if that was something that Mr. Man- Manter suggested or told them they needed to do.
Do you want me to answer that?
Well, I, do Brian want me to add?
Sure, if you can remember that far back.
Certainly, I don't remember the specifics, but the the intent here is that although they don't anticipate blasting, that it'd be good to have a procedure in place in the event that they need to do, um, uh, to do blasting. That way, um, when, if if that time does come, they'll be ready to go.
So it would be good, um, is that a suggestion or a direction?
It's a suggestion.
Right, suggestion, okay. Um, okay, so that was my, my one question. Um, I don't know that we have to make any changes in the minutes, it was just a question. Um, and then further down, Mr. Manter, um, the second, on the very last line of your remarks, it says, on the slope of the road, to see if there's any other opportunity to make the slopes more favorable. And I guess I'm just curious, is this the road that is called Rocky Ledge Terrace that you're talking about? Cause this is this whole kerfuffle about coming in too steep. No, yes, coming up too sterile, too, yeah, there, there's a place where the cars will bump.
Uh, yes, yeah, you're, um, that's correct. So the applicant, um, was proposing to, uh, for their, their proposed road from where the existing road ends to their, to continue the road to a dead end or cul-de-sac. Um, and that, I believe that the proposed slope had, um, areas that were eleven percent, maybe a little greater or so.
I remember.
And so we were just looking to see, uh, that the applicant further dive into that their analysis to see if there's any opportunities to reduce that eleven percent.
Okay, so the road.
They may not necessarily be able to meet this, the, the specifics intent of the subdivision rules and regulations, but we're looking to see how closely they can, if if possible.
The words, the road refers to, um, Rocky Ledge Terrace and it's continuation into the new subdivision.
Yeah, I don't know if there's anything that they can necessarily do with the existing road, um, but it's, it's really geared towards.
I didn't know that, okay.
It's, it's not, they do not control the existing road.
So it's the new road?
Correct, yeah.
I would use the word new, that helps. Um, and then, um, I had a question on page three, oh, I know, here it is, yes, um. So on page three, it starts out Ms. Dale, then Mr. Zakali, then Ms. Dale. And in the second Ms. Dale comment, there's a reference to a stronghold. And I believe that what I said was a straw poll.
Yes.
So it would say, but this is a preliminary review and not the final. It was a straw poll, not a binding vote.
I believe.
Same correction occurs under Chair Jarius.
Yes.
Second, second up from this section there, um, noted that many new homes, et cetera. And then also, when the board provided a straw poll opinion.
Uh, yeah, I think we can, we can all agree that straw poll is probably a better transliteration of what was said.
Well, it's like my, my spell checker or my dictation on my phone. Um, and then in section three, I think TMC is supposed to be MTC.
Uh, can you, which, this is the name of the, uh, our legal counsel.
Lead, Tallerman and Costa abbreviated would be MTC, not TMC.
Okay.
And at the very end of that paragraph, I would request that TP be replaced by town planner. Um, and, um, on the very last page, which is page five, um, uh, so Mr. Zakali, um, his paragraph goes on and on, it's good. Um, and he, it's referred to as I. I would imagine that the historical commission would consider, and I wonder why the existing door cannot be removed. Is it fine to say that I without putting it in quotes? Does it matter? Is it an issue?
Well.
It says Mr. Zakali, so.
Right, so, um, that's a good question. I believe these are.
But I think it's probably fine. I shouldn't have brought it up. It seems sort of nitpicky at this point.
I, I think it's, yeah, I would, I would, I, I don't know what the, what the proper third person is when you're speaking, when you're summarizing what something was said.
Something was said, it would say Mr. Zakali.
Yeah. But, yeah. In the, in the, um, why don't we just leave it as is? I'm just noticing we've spent five minutes on this one.
Let me just tell you, the, there's, there's two other corrections on page five. The first bullet, this says missing an existing door to the left, no, on the far left in the elevations. And it says both old and proposed drawings. Um, when she says, when we say old, does that mean existing conditions?
Yes.
Okay, so we should change it to that.
Should change that to existing conditions.
Under Mr. Lee, the second sentence suggested the drawings be revised and submitted, and that's all my comments on that one.
Okay, so, um, with those, um, corrections, is there a motion to approve? The, um, Brian, could you scroll to the top? I've already forgotten what the date is. Uh, is there a motion to approve the minutes of September sixth, twenty twenty two as amended?
I'm so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, roll call vote, please. Kurt?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Eching?
Abstain.
Uh, Sally?
Abstain.
Uh.
Aye.
Aye, and D E B's as I as well, so we have a four, zero, one. Thank you. Uh, on to the next one, please. And Sally, would you please send your, your edits to Nancy?
Oh, I will indeed, thank you.
Thank you. So we're now looking at September twentieth, twenty twenty two. And uh, let us accelerate through these if if possible. Are there any, um, edits on this?
On, on page two, this is where we got the email about the correction. It's on the bottom of page two in the Mr. Tallerman paragraph.
Okay, you would like to read into the record with the changes?
Instead of the sentence reading, he noted that adding a new non-conformity on a conforming property requires a special permit. The sentence should read, he noted that adding a new non-conformity conformity on a non-conforming property requires a special permit. And that was the email that we received. Brian?
So what he's noted, so what this is saying, this is saying, uh, that, uh, the building commissioner could make the determination if the application was, um, so this, um, sorry, i- it should say that he noted that adding a new non-conformity on a conforming property, just like that, requires a variance.
Okay, I didn't see that that was what the edit was in the email. Should I try to share screen the email? I don't.
Well, the question, I think the question's arisen, what was actually said?
True.
And, and so maybe what we should do is ask Nancy to go back and and revisit that part of the, of the discussion to make sure that what was said is reflected in the wording. And if we come back and we discover that what was said was, well, it's what it was said is what was said, so let's, um.
So that would be great if Nancy could look at that. Um, on page three, I started to have all kinds of questions and and comments, and I know you're in a rush. And so I don't want to burden, burden down the meeting, but I felt like I needed a, a real better understanding of all that was talked about in our joint meeting with the ZBA.
So are these questions that would impact the minutes? Or are they questions which would, which would, um, make things more clear to you?
Um, for the most part, with one exception, they are things that would make things more clear to me. I only have one correction, which is in topic two, minor site plan on page three, minor site plan review versus site plan review. The first bullet under discussion, where the question was asked, do we get rid of the waiver process? And I think she means at a minimum. And instead of waiver process, I wanted to say that it would be section nine point five point one A waiver section of our zoning bylaw.
Okay, that seems reasonable. Yep.
And those are the only questions that I have. I mean, those are the only edits I have, other than, like I said, I really would love to have a better understanding of that whole discussion.
Right, so I think that it's important as we go through the, we're looking at these minutes, that if there are, if there are questions that arise because of personal clarification, that would be something that we would want to bring up on the agenda so that we can discuss it in, in full. Cause I, I, you know, for instance, we might want to get legal to come back in and discuss that. If that's so, um.
I think to some extent, that's a really good idea, but sometimes we get the minutes, um, right when we get the agenda. And so you're not supposed to, unless you, unless I say, alright.
So my point, my point would be if those questions come up, then write the questions down and let's schedule it for the agenda. Because we're, we're really at this point, just trying to get these minutes out the door.
Which is great, and I will definitely write my questions down about page three of the September twentieth minutes. Thank you for suggesting that.
Just, just as a, a very quick reminder, um, you can always, um, uh, email the group or one or all or anyone related to scheduling. So that's one thing that, that, that's, that is not against open meeting law. So anyone can, i- it's talking about an agenda item or scheduling to when to do something that's related to the planning board. That's totally fair to talk about over email, any, just a hundred percent all around. Scheduling is totally fine. So don't, uh, don't feel, um, that that's breaking anything. Certainly agenda items, that's completely, totally appropriate to, um, you know. Yeah, you don't have to email everybody. You could just email the chair or you could email everybody. You could do that too. It doesn't matter. Scheduling is not related to open meeting.
Excellent. Um, and then I, I'm just trying to see if I, I don't think I had any other actual.
Okay.
Right, it was just that one.
So let us, um, so any other, uh, amendments from the rest of the board? Uh, seeing none, uh, is there a motion to approve the minutes of September twentieth, twenty? Oh, we need to bounce this back to Nancy to take a look at that, um, one part. So why don't we, we're, we're going to, uh, push this off? We were going to move this to a time uncertain.
Since we're, since we're pushing it off, does, does that help Sally's, um, inquiry at all in terms of time to?
I, I, that's.
So what's really interesting? It, it, there's, there's what we talk about in the meeting, and then there's what we talk about after the meeting to clarify what happened in the meeting. And what we talk about afterwards to clarify what happened in the meeting didn't happen in the meeting, and these are the minutes of what happened in the meeting. So.
Yeah, so that's why I really, approving the minutes should just be focused on, are the minutes a, a accurate and complete, um, record? And so we should focus on that and, 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 and a further elucidation is something that we need to, we need to take in another time, cause we've only scheduled a few minutes for this and we're already fifteen minutes and we've only approved one. So let's, let's move on to, we're, we're tabling this one um, in the sense that we're taking it off the table. And let's move this to, let's go on to the next one, please, Brian. I thought we had three, right?
Yeah, hold on, let me just get it up.
Lost you.
Yeah, it's November first is the next one. I'll get it up in just a sec.
Okay, so while Brian's pulling that up, are there any comments on the November first one?
I have one spelling correction and one edit, that's it.
Is, is the edit substantial or is it just a, okay, so let us just go straight to the edit. Will you're, we'll just assume your spelling is, is correct?
Um, I can give Nancy an email about the spelling. So on page one of November first, under one B, last sentence or last phrase, also looking to include Winchester Hospital. I think what you, you meant to say, and you might have said it this way, um, or you might have meant it to say, you're also exploring if we can incorporate the existing Winchester Hospital shuttle. Is that what you meant?
Yeah.
Okay, so if we said that, it would make more sense to somebody reading this a year from now or whatever, whoever reads these. Is that we're trying to include the whole hospital? It's looking, no, we're also exploring if we can incorporate the existing Winchester Hospital shuttle. I think that's what you meant.
Yeah, no, completely.
Okay, good. And then I'll just, I'll give Nancy the spelling correction. That's all I have.
Okay, are there any other, um, edits, please? If not, I'd welcome a motion to approve the minutes of November first, twenty twenty two as amended.
So moved.
Is there a second, please?
Again.
Roll call vote, please. Kurt?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Eching?
Aye.
Sally?
Aye.
I say aye as well. Okay. Last one, please. Here we are, November 16th, 2022.
I have only two very minor edits.
Okay.
One on page two, under potential tree bylaw. And it's the bullet, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, the bullet that starts major tree. Preservation bylaw involves three areas being considered, entire property slash construction related, tree review zone, no construction, and entire property, very large trees. Um, Debs and Brian, you're both on that working group. Is that correct?
I would say the entire property was for significant trees.
Significant. Thank you.
So I, I, I agree with entire property with, with significant trees.
Oh, yes. And then the, the, the bullet, two bullets below that, that starts bylaw committee. I think what it should say is the bylaw would create a committee that would.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a good clarification.
Okay. And then on the, I'm sorry, there was three, not two. I'm sorry. And then on page three, the very top bullet. I think what, let's see, was this just general planning board discussion? Oh, no, this is all from you, Debs. The top bullet says the development process would include a rigorous public review incorporating feedback. And don't we mean the bylaw development process?
Yes, I think that's a good clarification.
Okay. And that's all I have.
Okay. Any other amendments? Ameliorations? Seeing none. Would someone please move to accept to approve the minutes on November 16th, 2022 as amended?
So moved.
Is there a second? Thank you, Nick. Roll call vote. Kurt?
I'm staying.
Uh, who's next? Nick?
Aye.
Eching?
Aye.
Sally?
Aye.
And Debs's aye as well. Thank you very much. I believe that is it for minutes for this evening. And we will move on to our next item on our agenda. If I can find my agenda, I could tell you what it is. Where's my agenda? What happened to my agenda?
It's the FY 24 budget. We have till eight, not till.
So let's dive into the FY 24 budget. So typically this is, this doesn't require an awful lot of discussion because we don't have an awful lot of money to talk about. But I thought that I would lead with a discussion, when we get into the things we can do something about, I'll talk about something we probably can't do something about. And that is our annual discussion with town management about getting funding for the assistant planner position. So Sally and I met with Beth Rudolph and Mark Too Good, acting and assistant town managers respectively. Last week, was it last week, Sally? I can't remember anymore. It must've been last week.
I just heard you.
Okay. One of the things we discussed was the, the the issue with having no backup for the town planner. And that we would really like to see an assistant planner come in and that this has been on the plan for a number of years. And as a matter of fact, the the override, which was passed a number of years ago, the last big override originally had included funding for an assistant town planner, which was lopped off. So I told them that we would once more be asking to be fun, to fund an assistant town planner. They acknowledged the request, but said that due to the current financial state of the town, the fact that the town's triple A status is under review by Moody's. Because Moody's has changed their algorithm for assigning your status. And so they, at the time we spoke, no one actually knew what Moody's concerns were. But there is great concern about losing the triple A. And so putting in another FTE in the budget was not something that they would propose. I let them know that we would still continue to be a thorn in their side and keep pushing for this. So that is, that is the part that we have no control over, although we will continue to push for it. And now we come to the part we have control over.
So before we, before we go on to the part we have control over, I just wanna, I hate to not beat a dead horse, but a horse that keeps getting beaten every year. But is there a way to dollarize the value of having an assistant town planner? And might there be a strategy of putting it in the budget with the understanding that the position might not be filled until halfway through the year and put that budget amount in?
Thank you, Sally. Yeah. That I, I, that was a really important contribution you made to the discussion and I completely forgot about it.
No, it's okay.
So the, the idea is, is that we would, we, we have essentially, I doubt that we're going to be able to get that in time for this budget. Cause we have to give this to our request within a couple of days, actually.
And so whatever that, I think it's a grade D or something. I have it right here, but whatever that 50% of a year of a grade D employer, whatever it is, we would put that in the budget and say, we anticipate hiring a town planner and we will attract the best candidates if we can tell them that one halfway through the year, they will have money to hire an assistant planner to advance the agenda of the, of the department and the board.
So we're gonna get right into the sheet and like actually get down. And that's what this meeting is for, is to like, look at the Excel sheet and kind of talk about real money in terms of what's, what's gonna happen. So sorry.
Yeah. So pop that up, Brian. So Sally, that is an excellent idea. And I think that the people we have to convince are FinCom.
Yep.
And so I think we have a little bit of time to come up with those arguments. You know, what is, to quantify the, the financial impact of the planner of an assistant planner. But that will, I think, require some effort by this board to do some research and try to figure out something which has legs in terms of saying what it is that we think will get out of a town planner or an assistant town planner.
I think for the purposes of the box that we need to fill out in this spreadsheet that's due in like 36 hours. So where it says permanent, you would increase the fiscal 24 request by six months of the pay grade for that job. And I just had it with me a moment ago with the.
So, yeah. So Sally, so that's what this, can you, I don't know how easily you can view these numbers that are in here.
I see it. Seventy-six to one thirteen.
Right. So, so that is what the position, you know, that's what, you know, those, that's the grade that it's in. So that's what can be offered in terms of, you know, you know, within that range based upon how many years of experience you're looking for.
Exactly. And that's sort of a town planner position.
Correct. And you know, there's other, and I think what you're talking about here is this professional services one. So we, we actually do need to go, there's not a lot here. And most of this is kind of, you know, not really a lot of time at all in, you know, in general. It, the, the time here, like you said, is we need to figure out the professional services and whether that's going to be potentially used for several. Cause right now there's, there's actually no professional services money. It's all been contracted out until June 30th.
What do we have now that we pay form and place with?
That, that money.
We're, we're, yeah, we're out. I, I, I wanna make a little clarification, Brian. I think Sally is asking to add the six months of an assistant town planner in line one, right there.
Yes.
Six to one thirteen K plus whatever the range is for the assistant town planner, which is grade D.
I believe it's a D. I have it in my paper.
Yeah, it's a D.
Thank you, Debs.
It is a D. Yeah.
So why don't?
One, one quick question as we're talking about this too. Are we confirmed that, you know, or has a decision been made, I guess, by the town planner that we're actively going out in terms of finding Brian's replacement, to hire for a town planner as opposed to a planning community development director or like another level within here?
So that's a really good question. And I've, my, my memory is that that position has been removed. So the planning and community development director was the first position that was created, I think, 10 years ago plus for a joint position. But the, it was for a position that was jointly supervised by the planning board and the select board. That person left after six months. And then the town planner position was created, which was solely under the direction of the planning board. And I, later we created the assistant town planner position through town meeting. So that position has never been filled after the very first person left. And I believe it was removed. So I've reached out to human resources and Peter Kymets, head of the personnel board to see whether they have that same recollection or whether I'm wrong. So.
Got it. It, it is, Debs, it is still in this schedule.
Yeah.
That was circulated. Okay.
We think it's a mistake. Yeah. Both, both Debs and I, this was sleuthing today. So it's, 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 it's it's happenstance that you brought it up because it was the talk of the day in terms of a weird issue. Anyway, so yeah, we both think it's a mistake in the compensation schedule is what we think.
Yeah. Thirty-eight K.
I'm sorry, the mistake being that it was removed?
That it was included.
Oh, okay.
No. So, so that thirty-eight K is.
That's 50%.
Six months. That's sixty, that's six months. That's six months.
I was gonna say starvation wages.
Yeah, no, I mean, so.
Why don't we put six months in there just so that some of us recognize that?
So, but what you can offer is between sixty-four. Well, you can ask, you can ask for between sixty-four. It's huge, actually. It's a very large difference. It's between sixty-four and ninety-five is that grade. So it's actually very large difference.
Divided by two. So that would be thirty-two to.
Well, I did like seventy-eight. I did like a step nine, which was kind of in the middle. So it says step nine divided by two is what I was doing.
That's how you got to thirty-two, but it could be, well, oh, I see. That's how you got to thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight. Well, yeah.
As the starting salary.
As the starting. Yep.
Yeah. So let's, just to, to make this more confusing, what if you actually put in the sixty-four to ninety-eight inside the bracket, parentheses, and then just put it divided by two after it?
Divided by two for half year.
Yeah. So that way we'll know, cause we may ask for sixty for this next year. But the year after it's going to be, if we get this, it will be a full year salary, which people have to understand what that range might be. So.
Wouldn't that half year be less because it doesn't include any of the benefits and stuff?
No, it'd be full time, but they wouldn't start until.
Exactly. It's full time. Yeah. Exactly. You said it. You said it.
June, July, August, September, October.
Whatever you've done, Brian, looks really weird.
It's also, cause I, it's wrong and I was in the middle and then I started talking and screwed it all up.
Good.
Oh my God, it's a walk in chew gum.
ZF emoji, emoji, emoji.
Yeah. Okay. So that, so.
Eching, was Eching's question answered?
Oh, I'm, yeah, okay.
Yes.
It's like watching a, a, a ghost write things. It's like a Ouija board.
It's a poltergeist.
It's a, yeah. Weird things are happening. And if you put another S after assistant, I won't keep thinking astronomer planner. Thank you.
And do you intentionally have a double apostrophe?
And I would put a divide by two underneath that.
Poor Brian.
Close paren, divide by two. Cause it is that. Okay, great. Okay. I think we're done with the typing and the really slow update. Okay. So we're done with that. So let's go down to. So our budget for temporary was essentially, that's for Nancy, our recording secretary?
Secretary. And in, you know, we were pretty down, you know, it was a very good estimate that we had the last year. It was down to, you know, within, I don't know, fifty or sixty dollars. That, that, if I remember correctly.
The bottom is cut off.
Well, the, the, the second line includes time for a recording secretary for the master plan implementation committee.
What lines are you on? What, what line energy are you guys looking at?
Line number four.
Okay. And that's, that's where, who, and who's in there?
That's Nancy.
Our recording secretary.
Yeah, that's the recording secretary. Yeah.
So I think that, so the question is, so fifteen, so essentially we've got $1,200 if we go according to this, that we would use for MPIC recording, which is a hundred bucks a month. Assuming we do one meeting a month.
You're basing that on the fiscal twenty-two actual?
Yeah, I'm subtracting. We've got seventy-seven hundred for FY twenty-three budget. So I'm subtracting those two. And assuming that, that $1,200 is going to be sufficient for minutes for the MPIC. And I think that's.
I have no way of knowing. How many meetings? How long are they? How many?
It's, it's, it would be one meeting a month.
Oh, so it's, right.
So I think it's, I think it's sufficient. I mean, if we raised it to eight thousand, I don't, I think it's a big. I'm still a little surprised that our FY twenty-two was, was as high as it was without MPIC. So I'm guessing that there were some extra meetings along the way that Nancy had to, or some, some, having to go back and revisit the the tech.
Is, is there, is there any sort of history of, you know, ask for eight thousand or ask for eighty-one hundred and have them say, no, you can only have seven thousand, you know, like.
Well, typically, you know, I think it's if you do it for a whole bunch of years, if we, you know, if we ask for a certain amount and we never even come close to reaching it, they would just say, you know, don't request that. But.
Except we, now we have another recording secretary that we're putting into this budget, which is MPIC.
Well, we had that in last year's budget.
Right. So we asked for seven.
Starting this year.
Yeah, I understood.
I'm just saying, it's a fair.
I mean, we could go to eight thousand. I, I think we're fine with, I think we're okay with seventy-seven hundred. Although we, we also have to consider that we are going to have what's it called? The waterfield project will be coming up. And so there may be, you may recall that ten Congress, those of you who are around for ten Congress, we had a lot of extra meetings, I believe, on that one. So it's possible we will need more of Nancy's time for that. So maybe going to eight hundred, eight thousand would just be safe.
And you could put the rationale in the, the narrative, if such a thing exists. The rationale being that we are anticipating increased planning board meetings associated with what's it called? The waterfield. And we're anticipating an additional recording secretary for MPIC, monthly MPIC meetings. And those two things would bump it up to, to eight thousand. And they would say, oh, that sounds logical and approve it.
You're ever the optimist, Sally.
I know, isn't it? Just so obnoxious.
We go, so, so if the, if, if the group is okay with it, why don't we just do eight thousand? And, and leave it at that. It's.
Ryan, do you, do you type up a narrative that goes with this?
Yeah. So this, this is the this is kind of the party of the year that not only are you looking at the budget, but you're actually also thinking about, you don't have to defend it quite yet. But the money, you kind of have to have roughly an idea specifically with professional services and with this other stuff, it's not as nearly important. But in terms of what projects, so it's actually kind of a. Um, with this other stuff, it's not as nearly important, but in terms of what projects, so it's actually kind of a goal setting thing as well as. A. A budgeting thing, so you don't have to figure out all of that, but with the but the 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 money, yes. Uh, but you don't necessarily need to feel like you have to, like, maybe you're married to a certain project with that money, but but. That that, yes, eventually you will have to, that that's the point of going in front of FinCom saying, we need this money for this reason. This project, we're going to use it for X, you know.
So.
Sorry, Sally, you're muted, Sally.
Go ahead, DM.
No, you you go go ahead, I just had a a question, which I think I answered already.
So so in like, just like you put that plus or you put a parenthetical phrase on the permanent line. The parenthetical phrase would be a very shorthand reference to what our rationale will be. That we present, so it's like. Do I even just, well, I guess we'll just present it when we do the narrative.
Uh, yeah, I think we can, we can.
Good, okay.
We can remember it. I just want to make sure, Brian, um, and I I should know this, um, that we actually. We voted in new compensation plans and those would presumably affect. The salary or the whatever.
These are the ones that, these are the ones that came out, um, the revised one as of yesterday.
And so how much, so the, so we also have to take that into account when we budget for recording secretary. Because presumably, hopefully, those rates have gone up to account for cost of living.
Uh, a lot of the time, the temporary doesn't, but I will make sure that that is, uh, that is the case. But I do not believe that is part of the budgeting municipal budget.
Yes, I I noticed, yeah, so let's, let's make sure that the salary we pay is commensurate with. I I I really.
We we do have control o- over this, over those steps and we can talk, um, we can talk about that.
Okay.
Offline, I think, I understand the the.
It's her.
Goal, yeah.
One one quick question, um, how do you show what the total fiscal request will be down at the bottom of the sheet? When you have ranges up above, how do you do that?
So that, so, yeah, um, we do need to have a an actual. You know, we can have it based upon a grade and step, the the though, I think this one is, we're gonna, we would pick the middle, I don't know what the the answer to. This first one is, and then if.
It's based on years of experience.
Right, so so i- it's kind of a weird thing to say, but you basically do need to make, we need to have a. You know, you could ask for the whole thing, to be honest, and then if you don't use it, you don't use it, like, that also happens, um, you know, there's a lot of different ways to play this. But the idea is that we need to come up with a number tonight, or is it more appropriately in twenty minutes or so?
Well, so you never put the top of the range in, um, your offer.
Well, for for a budget, you put it, but you don't put it in the offer, and and if they're at a different level than Brian is, then you'd start them up.
Right, this is just, this is just the range in which you can give an offer to.
So let's, let's just use yours, whatever you're at now, Brian, which I think is at the top level.
It's one off, yeah.
One off, why don't we put in, let's put in the top level. It's, it's not a big difference, but it allows us to have the flexibility.
So it would be top level for the current planner position and then top level for the proposed assistant planner position. That we would be asking for.
I think that would be. I think that might actually, you know, if we have any hope of getting this through FinCom, I think we need to go for something lower than ninety two K. Because that's a thirty K year.
Yeah, I think.
Brian, you suggested half.
Well, not necessarily, that was just, that was a place to to in terms of what you had to play with. It makes sense that if you're putting an assistant under someone that that the, that the. The, um, I don't know what we would call it, the who's ever above the, if it's town planner and then assistant town planner. Then it makes sense that it would be at the higher end from, um, just because you're managing a person and that's not really in the job description quite yet.
No, we were talking about the sixty four to ninety two.
So I know we started off with, we're gonna go right back to what you wrote, Brian. Um, so any, Sally and I have been hugging this conversation, any anything from the other members of the board? To move this along, do you wanna, shall we just go in the middle like Brian had it now that we've discussed all of this? Okay.
That makes sense.
Okay, so, uh, whatever you had in there originally, let's put it back, Brian.
Can you keep that comment as a footnote or just have a separate?
Yeah, put it in a separate column, that way we'll be able to just sum it up, sum it together. So just, I think you're gonna have to turn those into zeros, Brian, otherwise you're not gonna be able to sum that column.
Oh, uh, yeah, no, this is more of notes and then I'm going to, um.
Oh, you'll write it up later, okay.
Yeah, and then like just, yeah, so we we certainly don't have to do that, but, um, yeah, wh- because these. These actually numbers need to be exactly to what the compensation schedule says, it's not seventy six K, it's like a very, it's seventy six thousand one hundred twenty. You know, it's a very specific number, so we're not getting into that detail, so I guess I I probably shouldn't have said we have to come up with the number, it's more of. I will come up with the exact numbers later.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I've got, I've got a question on professional services and I, something tells me that we've addressed this, but. Uh, our budget is forty five and we spent thirty one five and I'm wondering if we're gonna spend the rest of it.
We we already, yeah, we've already contracted it out, it's already done, that was during this year when, uh, well, it was, um. When COVID was more prevalent, um, in terms of what we were, uh, doing for just work inter.
Is FY, uh, is it the calendar year?
So, no, it's the fiscal year, so it's FY twenty two is from, um, July first of twenty one. Through June thirtieth of twenty.
Okay, but but I guess what, I I guess my question is, is why, why is the actual, does it reflect? The fact that we spent the rest of the money?
Because that's, that was the previous fiscal year, right now we are in FY twenty three at the moment, forty five. And we will have, we have already contracted out forty five and I guarantee you that that forty five will already be spent. Because we have contracted it out.
You know, so in the previous year, we we underspent is is what I'm asking.
Exactly, it was one of the few years ever that we've underspent, yes.
Okay, so, um. Let's, let's put a, um, put a. What is the word? I don't know, we're done with, we're we're done with personal services. Brian, you're just gonna make a note for, um, the temporary services that we're gonna, we're gonna, um, look at. Um, cost of living on that one. So we can skip on to, I think, I think Nick, you are, you are, um, prescient and moving directly to. Professional services, because I really don't think there's anything in those. Other ones that we really need to worry about. Um, let's just keep them as they are.
Um, it's possible. Uh, I have not used, I I'll be honest, and you, you know, like, because I have to be right here, that we we've rarely used. Our computer supplies because the IT bu- most, you know, a lot of the stuff comes out of the IT budget. It's possible the computer supplies based upon, e- especially if you're asking for. An assistant planner that you might wanna up that for the following year, just be ca- just because you're gonna have two new hires. Hope the hope is the hope, or that's at least what you're planning for in the budget, so I would, I would recommend, you know, and for that reason. Basically, maybe, maybe more like seven fifty instead of five hundred, just to beef it up a little bit more.
So why don't we split it into five hundred plus two fifty? So if they don't give us the town, the assistant, we still get five hundred.
So Brian, if you don't use it, um, because IT provides it, what what are you suggesting that this is used for? Computer supply.
Be- because this is a new hire, it's more of kind of covering that base so that they can at least get something that makes. You know, something that works and makes sense for them in terms of, you know, a laptop, I'm not talking about anything else other than, you know, a laptop and then. But, um, there are a lot of, um. You know, well, not a lot, but, uh, it's it's kind of like weird adapters for projectors that you end up using, that it's just like a lot of that type of stuff. Not a, but but in general, um, you know, not, not a lot, and that's why most of it, like I said, comes out of the IT budget. But the IT budget is is always, um. You know, i- it'd be, it'd be nice to at least soften that blow for the IT budget.
Yeah, so the IT department doesn't provide a laptop?
Yeah.
Well, yeah. They must provide a laptop, because this this budget wouldn't cover the cost of a laptop.
Yeah. Well, so they they get different rate, they certainly get different rates, um. But and when they buy it, it's such bulk when the, for the town, um, so, yeah.
I I would see, I could see, and I don't know if this works, computer supplies also, if there's some sort of cloud-based software that we wanted to. To get a subscription to or something like that, that might come out of this.
Yeah, like, most of his money is licenses.
Yeah, so, um, but if there's something particular that we would want, which aren't, which isn't in the standard sort of. Menu that he has available from wherever he gets the software from, so I think this is.
I would leave those other items, I mean, even even if there are variances.
They're pretty tiny.
I- i- it's consistent and I say we just go ahead with the small amounts the way they are.
Yeah. Yeah, let's, let's just, yeah, I mean, these are really tiny, we're we're, the elephant in the room is is waiting for us. So let's, let's pay for the peanuts.
Yeah, I would say maybe let's not overthink it.
Yeah, so, um, remind me to tell you about bike shedding, um, next time, let's go down to advertising, okay, Sally.
So one thing I want to ask about has to do with the communications study committee recommendations, and I know they're not gonna give fiscal impact report. To town meeting until I guess maybe this coming spring or next fall, I'm not sure. But in the meantime, I know that we want to have some improvements done to our planning board page. Um, and should we put under professional services some nominal number? To pay, um, a communications professional to at least, um, execute. Some of the recommendations that the planning board would come up with for, you know, things to add to the planning board page as an interim. Waiting for the communications study committee's major fiscal report.
Sure, um, can we, can we put two thousand bucks in under advertising and then move directly into that?
I would think that's advertising.
Thank you, I like that idea.
So is two thousand bucks sufficient? Um, and so we're gonna hire someone, look, I don't know what it costs to hire someone to to do your, the the. The issue with hiring someone is they have to get access to an internal system to do the changes. So that's something that, um, we need to figure out, but I think we should budget for it. And I don't know if that two thousand bucks is sufficient.
If you wanna hi- use a high school kid, it might work, but given the confidentiality issues you just noted, I would say it's not enough money.
I I really.
Sorry, sorry, hold on a second, that, uh, that that line item, uh, advertising, that is not. How what, how that money could be used, it could not be used to hire someone for a website, that would be under, that would be under professional services.
Okay, so.
Yes, exactly, so advertising is when. Um, maybe it's not a special permit, maybe it's a, there's a building permit, like, you know, a by right. Um, uh, a by right building permit in the C- center business district, the the the. Planning board can choose to make that a public hearing and then, you know, the planning board would would eat that cost because.
Right, so these are public, required public notices.
Yes, or some or advertising for a specific event, um, you know, like, or, you know, a housing forum or something that that, you know.
Which we have coming up.
Right, so so there's, you know, we certainly, you, um.
We have eight minutes to finish this, by the way, folks.
Okay, so why don't we keep the two thousand, then here, that this forty five thousand?
So we wanna hire, I I think we we need to hire, um, someone to do our website. And I I would recommend that we get someone, not a high school student, but someone who can jump in and whatever. Um, as much as I admire high school unit, high school units, high school students. We need someone who is, um, has experience so they can just do it. Five thousand is a lot for website design.
Design, it should just say webpage update.
Sorry, I thought that's what you had said.
No, I might have said that, but.
I thought two thousand was too little, five thousand might be a lot, I don't know. What I need to, what we should, we don't have, yeah, so here's the problem, we don't have time to figure out what the rate would be. So, yeah, why don't we put in five K? With the knowledge, we we don't actually know how much it'll cost, because we haven't actually written out. Uh, us, the scope of work for it.
Just say improvements, webpage improvements.
Yeah, okay, so what, I'm gonna call it the website anyway, my notes, so we got five K for website. Um, so then we have, um. So what are the major, this is where we get into the meat of it, what are the major projects that we envision coming up? Um, we're going to be done with the form in place, um, by the end of this fiscal, by the fiscal year twenty three. We should have the recommendations for form in place on zoning as well as design. That was the idea, was that we would have that done, that's where our fifteen K is going to, for the rest of their work.
Thirty, that that's actually thirty for form in place.
Yeah, but we already paid them fifteen.
Correct, or nearly, yes, yeah.
Yeah, so we only have another fifteen to go, so, um. We s- we will have to do something similar to form in place possibly for the light industrial district for Holton Swanton Cross. Um, it may not need to be as detailed because. I think there's, there's not as much streetscape there to work with. Um, so we, but we'll still need some monies for that, and I would suggest we we do like fifteen to twenty K for that project. So this would be phase two of Holton Swanton Cross, does that sound reasonable?
I I thought what we paid for form and place is very, um, stretched, like we, I I felt like. It was not very much money, um, so I wonder if we could just ask for more. Um, I I felt almost embarrassed at how much work they were.
Are you saying that we should give, we should give more money to, um, form in place?
Not, I I know, just for the service in general, or anybody who's providing that service, I think it it's really a lot, um. So I wonder if we can ask for more, not specifically for form place, but for this project, this aisle project.
Okay, okay, so, yeah, so instead of twenty grand for the second phase, you would, I mean.
I had twenty five, thirty, whatever, you know, it's like, that's, that's shoot high so that they can.
Could you just say, uh, you know, leave it, leave it constant, I mean, that would be a, that would be a, an ask, but it would be consistent with prior periods. And then you're, and then you're really asking, you know, you you're really reaching.
I mean, as, we we do kind of have to a- account for it, so if we get to forty five K at a minimum, I'm happy, but. Right now, I agree, um, with E Chiang that. More money would be better to get for Holden, so let's do Holden at thirty K. Now, what other projects are we going to start working on? Where we need consultants, so I think there's, we always want to have around ten K in hand as, um.
Contingency.
Contingency, thank you.
And then my question is, as we're looking at changes to the table of uses, well, I guess that could come under. The form and place budget, um, whether that's gonna cost us any consulting money, will the three A submittal? Um, or three A, ongoing three A compliance cost us any consulting money? Um, will the working out the legal aspects of the three point five point five policy cost us any money? Um, and I think those were all the ones I, oh, will the ADU forms and rules and regs cost us any money?
The answer to all three of those is no. No money, no money, no extra money there.
Sir, and did you guys, and I apologize, I was just putting against the bed, but did you cover on on like both um the North Main Street corridor and Holden and Swanson, like the actual like drafting of zoning changes? Like the actual drafting of the language that we proposed to change, because form places isn't doing that, right? I mean, there weren't any legal to do that for us, presumably.
Yeah, that that's, I I I believe that would be covered under their contract. They have a, they they kind of, it's a, it's a flat fee contract, I think.
I saw they said either or, that the amount of money, and to your eaching's point, that the amount of money that they agreed to do this was for, um, I don't know why I have this memory, but it was either to come up with design guidelines or to help us craft zoning language.
Yeah, well, they certainly can't do, they certainly can't do that with this, yeah, with thirty thousand and plus doing the all the test fits that they've.
Right, we we have about two more meetings with them, right? And I think that we're expecting a more complete picture of what um than than what they have offered. I just don't think that in two meetings, we're gonna get the graphics and like the um PR package that we can use to to persuade the town to do, okay, this zoning change. You know, I I just think that there will be a lot more um work ahead of us for form place to get it to the place where town meeting can look at it and and make a determination.
So does that make it like a a ongoing phase of North Main Street?
I think there would be a lot more work, yeah.
Ongoing ongoing consulting for um ongoing North Main Street corridor revitalization.
So, yeah, so I I would to to answer somebody's question about. So I expect that when we get to the drafting stage for the zoning, that we will not that's that's no longer forming places' job to do that. That falls squarely into we will be working, we will essentially create the policy that we want. And then we would go to legal, which would draft the language to meet that policy. So form in place may say, you should consider, you know, allowing, you know, expanding, I don't know, be incorporate this, be able to incorporate parcels back in these areas, or you should, so they're gonna come up with suggestions on what we can do physically. And then we will work with 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 legal to create the zoning, which would actually um make that possible. So I really see form in place really in terms of creating a higher level view of these things. So that we we sort of, they give us the framework and then we fill it in.
Yeah, but DAB, you know, like, one of the reasons why we hired them in the first place was their ability to graphically depict. So, you know, once we get legal to get the the wording, say, and we have this idea, like, to communicate those ideas, say, three versus four stories to to town, I think will be some kind of work from somebody like former place to to.
Okay.
You know, cause like I've seen it in like zoning bylaws or um uh, you know, form form based codes where the the graphics are integral to understanding what's going on, right? And I don't think legal can do that.
I I think that's a really, yeah, so it comes to rules and design, it's the design rules and the zoning rules.
I I misunderstood your, what you said, Yicheng. I I I I now belatedly agree with you completely. So what you're saying is that we should add money into the budget to um provide that sort of supplementary information that goes along with the zoning using their their expertise at at um visualization and.
Yeah, it might not even be supplementary. I almost feel like legal supplementary to what they're sort of graphically depicting, you know? This is, this is what we are hoping for.
So why don't we call this phase three of North Main Street? And this would be something which I I'm not sure how we're actually going to define it in words. I think I kind of get the.
I I think we could say phase three of North Main Street is to um take the uh final um uh test fits that form and place will have presented, that we will have chosen. And to um turn them both into visuals that we will pair with policy statements that we will ask legal to turn into bylaws with visuals. You know, the diagrams like you see in the Newton zoning bylaw, for instance. Um, and the money would also allow form in place to create compelling graphics to communicate our vision and our policy, the basis for our policies and our d- design um requirements. And that's what the money would pay for, Yicheng. Does that sound right?
Yeah.
Okay, so that sounds excellent, and I'm so glad we're recording this, because I can't write that fast. So what is it that we're looking for? We're looking for another ten grand?
Yeah, at least, if not fifteen.
I was gonna say thirty.
Yep.
Well, thirty's a, we're we're getting kind of big here, so let's, because we've got to justify a a hundred percent increase in our budget. So right now, if we do fifteen K, we're already at uh, we're at fifty five. Um, so the question is, what is it, what other projects do we? So we do have um, we've got the MBTA zoning. But we 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 can do that either next fall or the following spring. We have to get it all done by the end of twenty twenty four. Um.
Well, so part of, some of that could um, that twenty thousand, some of that could be towards the, because it's, it is a large part of the uh MBTA overlay zoning district is the GBD two and three. Um, so there's, you know, this money could definitely go towards three A uh projects.
Well, if you bump it to twenty five and say it's phase three North Main Street and and five um and um and uh GBD two section three A changes.
I would, I would just call those out as two separate things, because I think that I know they're kind of the same, but the fa- the section three A also does say something about, well, I don't know if we have to do anything in the CBD. Um, but if we're gonna, why don't we just say five K per section three A? Twenty K for phase three North Main Street. Um. What other projects are we going to do? I don't know yet.
Well, there's Washington Swanton, but we are not the permit granting authority.
Yeah, we don't have to do anything on that. Brian, you need to add in ten ten K for contingency. So we are at forty, fifty, sixty, seventy K.
So I think part of the case making for this is that, you know, I know there's there's.
It's sixty, oh, ten, seventy.
Yeah, I get seventy. Do you get sixty?
No, I got seventy two. You're right.
Okay, seventy.
I I mean, I I don't know how to say this to town meeting and to the FinCom and the town manager that the demands on the planning board um are sort of commensurate with all of the pressures facing uh communities in the greater Boston area. Um, with housing and growth and development. And eh this is not a status thing, you know, status quo. This is a wow, we really need to up the capacity of this town to address the future.
Yeah, I think that's, you know, that's an argument we we will will develop, or at least address. I mean, I'm just, right now, just to make sure that we're okay with. Are we shortchanging ourselves? I don't think we're shortchanging ourselves. Um, this is a significant raise in in what we've asked for before. I think that part of it is um, to be honest, I don't know if this is sufficient considering that uh, we know that inflation has hit everyone. And I don't know whether the seventy K is worth seventy K in twenty fiscal year twenty twenty two dollars, so. Um. I don't even know how to ask that.
I mean, that's that's a, that's a um, uh, given, you know, what are we in an eight percent inflationary environment? Um, y- you could make the case to the FinCom that it's these numbers times one hundred and eight percent is what we're really asking for.
I think the big numbers there in professional services is something that I don't think we've asked before as much, right? And that we're um really focusing on the economic development, um the business environment of the town, which is that the town really needs that this economic base, this tax base from businesses, that's really crucial. So I think those two parts are gonna, you know, boost it a lot.
So one thing is that what the manager did was instead of um, or the acting town manager at the time, which is uh still the same one at the moment, but they didn't approve the assistant planner, but they gave us um, they upped the professional services money in response. So that was like, you know, so there is, just so you know that there that is at play um potentially.
No, thank you for for reminding us, Brian. I'd forgotten. So we got an extra fifteen K because they didn't give us the assistant planner. So we're gonna ask for an extra hundred K because they didn't give us the assistant planner this time.
Let, Brian, can you just come up with a number that would go online or in cell three G of the spreadsheet, so we can see the total number at the bottom?
Yeah, I can get an exact in a minute. Um, if you wanna, I don't know, we're, or we could go on to something else and I could focus on that for a minute.
Yeah.
I know, our timing is horrible at the moment, to be honest.
Yeah, we are, we need to dive into form and place. I think we're sufficient for this budget. I think that whatever number Brian comes up with, unless anyone sees that we are under requesting or over requesting, I think our budget is pretty much set. And the exact number is going to be about, um, well, we're, it's gonna be about ninety thousand more than last time.
Was the, again, I guess one one final question to get those numbers is, the number that I was going to use was actually the mid, the midpoint of of each of the grades for those, um, right?
No, no, we're gonna use the, we're gonna use the upper end for the town planner, one hundred thirteen K.
Oh, sorry, so that's, yeah, that's step seventeen, and then middle.
Would be whatever you had before, which was.
No, for the assistant, and then for the assistant town planner. It was like.
You had thirty eight. Does that?
But yeah, that, yep, yeah, and that was based upon step seven. Okay, alright.
It would be one thirteen plus thirty eight.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I'm gonna get the exact number here.
Yeah, so I think we're looking, I was wrong. I don't think we're asking for ninety K more. I think we're asking for um, maybe sixty or seventy K more. But that's what it is.
Well, and I think it is important that we make the case making compelling, and we'll work on that.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think this is unreasonable. It's 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 it's.
Especially if you're losing your planner. I mean, this, I'm professional, we're losing professional services.
Yeah.
I feel a big one, so.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, so I think we can, we can put this to rest for the moment.
Yeah.
Um, and then let us move on to form in place. So what is it that we're doing tonight? I think tonight we have reactions to um form and places' presentation. And we also have to come up with our, they're waiting on us to give them directions as to what to do next. And.
Uh, Brian, you said you were gonna um email us that presentation? Can you still do that so that um we could play around with it as we're talking?
Or have it up on the screen also.
I actually had, I got that somewhere, so I don't know how I got it.
I got it. I think it was sent to us by um Suzanne Gill as a separate um um packet entry, because it wasn't received in time to go into the packet for that meeting on October eleventh. So she sent it after October eleventh, as soon as form in place gave Brian their copy.
Yeah.
Cause I have one, I have one that that I got that way. I can find the email from Suzanne. Hold on.
Uh, Brian sent one on October twelve.
Okay, that, is that it?
Should be, because I think they presented on the eleventh.
That would, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that's the one.
So that's the one to download? To each of our computers?
Yeah, it's it's.
Should have been in the email.
Uh, I I will get that up, just so you know, um, we'd always hovered around a total planning board budget of you know, personal service, of everything, right around a hundred and fifty, and this budget would be kind of right around a hundred and eighty.
Huh? Only only thirty K more?
Uh.
That doesn't make sense.
Yeah, wait a minute, it might not have gotten everything there.
Yeah.
And that's.
Okay, so um while Brian is figuring out his numbers.
Got some problems, clearly.
So why don't we um. Why don't, why don't you uh pop up that thing, maybe, or one of us can pop it up. I can't.
You can't. Here, let me give you control at the moment. Okay.
There we go. Okay, um, let me make sure I have it on screen and do. Um, where the heck did Zoom go? Okay, I've lost Zoom. Hold on a second. There it is. Let me try that again. Okay. Do you see?
Yes.
Okay, so um, why don't we go, shall we go straight to the test fits? How do we want to organize this this discussion?
I think there's two goals here. I think one is is um, that um one is seeing if um, you know, what if you feel that you can actually use what's given here in in these test fits to start writing or at least getting bare bones of of some type of design guidelines that we could be working with legal on. So it's like, do you feel that you are able to do that? And then number two is like DAB said of kind of giving form in place a um more direction on terms of how they should be spending their time. Um, uh, considering that they've done, I think they've actually done, even though they only billed us for half, it looks like they like Yicheng said, it looks like they kind of were maybe generous and um gave a lot. You know, put a little bit more time and effort into that front end, but maybe only bold us half. So I think we have to actually take that into consideration for the amount of work they have actually put put into this. So maybe what I'm trying to say is that I don't think that we can expect legitimately to get this many for the same amount of time and effort that they can actually provide. So I just want to make that clear. And that's my, that's my per, that's my personal opinion. I think Yicheng agrees. Um, I I I just don't think it's realistic. I think it's the amount of hours that it took to do what just we're gonna be going through here does not equal the uh invoice. Not not that they're playing funny business in any way, but the fact that I I think they they want to keep with working with us and they're trying to make it work. I think that we just can't accept the same level of detail for 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 this.
Unless we decide that we want to essentially extend the contract.
You could do, no, you could do that. This is, this is just, so right now, we have about half of this contract of fifteen thousand, that that's through June thirtieth. It cannot extend beyond June thirtieth of next year. That's that that's.
Right, but we, we we could say, let's take the the rest of the fifteen K and do something similar for one more test. Do you think, for instance, that the fifteen K? I'm sorry.
I I I think you, I think you take what they did on this one, and then you do it at another intersection, another key intersection that we want to look at to 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 determine what potential design. to, to, to determine what potential design guidelines could be written based upon what's physically possible there. That's the goal here in general uh, for the zoning. But they, they basically, in my opinion, they would be, they would be able to do what they did in terms of a scope this large with not enough detail or a smaller scope with the same amount of detail.
Okay.
So I think that's the choi, that's the choice that you need to, that's one choice. That's definitely a very clear question that the board should make is that would you rather cover kind of the same geographical area around an intersection? And it be not as detailed or have it at, like, yeah, again, have it this detailed, but it probably would be over a smaller, a smaller scope, smaller, you know, project site for this.
So there's, so the question that I have is starting from the back, from the end product. So what is the end product we would like to see? How much will it cost to generate that end product? And how much leftover money do we have to apply to another test fit? If it turns out, for instance, that the product we want out of them at the end, which would be some sort of a document, which, which fills out all of these things, will cost them fifteen grand to produce, then we won't be able to do another test fit. And so if it costs them ten grand to do, then we'll be able to maybe do a small test fit. So.
See, I, I almost wonder if Brian's question is a good question to pose and I could say that I would love to see them visualize all of North Main Street, one mile up and one mile back, in some level of generality, like a massing study. Um, and I would like that to, um, dovetail, I guess is the word, with, um, the number of units that we're hoping to add, which is twelve hundred and twenty, if I'm not mistaken. And so how would they visualize?
Number, Sally, what?
Um, Brian, help me out with that.
So that's the number, you know, we don't, we don't have to build that. We just have to, to zone for that, which technically we.
Oh, so we're talking about three A now?
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and don't forget that the center, town center can accommodate a lot of units.
Right. So doing the math and saying, okay, well, so of the twelve hundred and twenty, we're gonna put six hundred and ten south of the Stop and Shop. Right? And then you go GBD two, and then you go GBD three and GBD two. You have formula percentages of how many can be within a half a mile, which takes us up to, help me out, is it Nut Canal, um, oh, Clark, it's right there.
Clark.
Right. So, and, and then doing this, to, to Brian's example of, do you wanna see a small area and little, in great detail or a larger area and a more uh, broad brush analysis? Um, I wanted, I wanna take advantage of their visualizing and their massing, understanding of how you can put units into attractive buildings of different sizes and show that going all the way up and all the way back on both sides.
So that's, that's, um, so so far they have visualization. So you're talking about street level visualization?
I believe so, or, um.
So, so that's, they haven't provided that for us. Um, so we just, so I'm, I'm getting, I'm worrying about scope creep and detail creep here, just because, um, if it's gonna cost, if it costs us, let's just say it costs us fifteen K to do the, the test fits on that they gave us. Fifteen to ten K. There are at least, I, I see North Main Street as essentially three connected chunks, right? Stuff north of, of Swanton, the stuff, south of Clark and the stuff in between. There are two, there are three separate things. So if we're gonna do the same level of deep dive without visualizations as you're describing, then we're talking, you know, forty-five K for the whole stretch plus visualizations. And I don't think we have the budget for that. And that's, that's.
I guess my, my, my wish list, my, my, um, aspirational, um, description of what we would get next, um, is based on, I'm just trying to understand when a town, a planning board, and eventually its engineering department and everybody else takes on a corridor revitalization, at this point in the process, what is the helpful thing they do next?
So where we are in this process is that the, um, they've come up with what's, you know, potentially physically possible based upon a couple of intersections. So kind of that's what these test fits are, is our potential, you know, potential new intersections. And the, the goal here of all this right now, in terms of why we're here tonight, is to kind of figure out um, a couple of things, but, but, but one is that, um, when I think the answer is probably not, um, i- is that are we ready to start talking about trying to glean, uh, specific design guidelines from these test fits? So that's us discussing about, you know, you know, looking at other types of design guidelines, uh, either in the Center Business District or in other different, uh, in other, um, uh, cities and towns. Um, but really trying to see like, well, if this is the type of vision that we wanna see, what are the words that you're gonna be using the design guidelines to make that vision possible? So, you know, tha- that's, you know, that's the goal here, that, uh, is to come up with, um, like Dab said, is that the, the actual zoning language is probably gonna rely more heavily on legal. What the, what they can do is give us possible visions and then we get to pick, like a buffet, get to pick and choose what parts of this vision do we want to adapt towards a potential, uh, design guideline or, um, uh, for the area? So I think, think of it more of like that, of like, kind of like a buffet, um, of getting to be able to pick and choose out of these portions of the, uh, of these test fits, what could work in that area?
I have this um, feeling of optionitis here, like there is way too many things in front of us. And possibly that all of us need a graduate course on urban planning. Something is missing in terms of how we get there. And with this professional service of, with them here, I, I, I just, I feel like we, I, I don't, and I've had graduate courses in urban planning, like I don't understand where we need to do, where we need to go in order to get to this place. So I looked at Somerville, say, Union Square, and, and the stuff that they've done. Like, that was like eight years of planning. And then I think, from my understanding is that the city actually took, like, did eminent domain and like actually, you know, um, partnered with developers to do all of that stuff. So with this, you know, all these test fits, it's like, sure, these could be options. We could push, make the streetscape really strong. We could push the parking to the back, encourage green space. But like they said, the zoning hadn't, like, they did all of this within the existing zoning. So like, I just don't understand how we would be able to, um, make that first point, which is make the framework to encourage developers to do this. I, there is, there's something like really critically missing here. And I, I just, because this is within, this is within the rights of existing zoning. And I think my, my point that I got from last time we talked to them was that we focus on the streets. We make the streets a lot um, more multimodal. Um, and maybe like if you're gonna devote this part, then you push the stuff to the front, you, you encourage the streetscape, you, you reduce the curb cuts. But then, but then what? Like, I just, I'm not really sure where the missing part is.
Well, that's always like my question, how do you encourage and even make possible um, the aggregation of lots, if that's the word that I'm looking for? Um, um, I, I always wondered how you do that.
That's by market, you know, like, um, I, it's, it's a, it's a market thing. It's, it's a business deal.
So, so, you know, it goes back to that flip comment that I made like six months ago. If you build it, if we just, if we build it, they will come. If we create, and I don't know if it's flip or it's real, but if we make a really beautiful streetscape and we've got really, um, in, uh, what do I wanna say? Encouraging zoning and design guidelines, um, will that do it?
So I don't know. I, 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 I actually don't know if everything they discussed is possible within current zoning. Um, certainly we need, I, I think that a bunch of it is, but some of it isn't, like the purely residential, obviously that's, we can't do that. But with section three A, we would. Um, so I don't, E Ching, I don't know where we go to to answer that question. It's not something I think that Form and Place can provide us. Um, that's so but we still have to start with some sort of a framework, which is I think what they've given us. My, I wonder if, what I see is actually two parallel things that can go on. One is that we wrestle with this dilemma and look at the options given us for South North Main Street, or whatever we're calling this.
Lower North Main Street, yeah.
Lower North Main Street. And we'd wrestle with that as a board, but we let, we say Form and Place, give us something similar for the rest of the corridor so that we can work in parallel, cause.
And one thing, they gave us three options for each of the aggregated properties. And maybe we need to, as a board, discuss the visuals that they provided, cause like, like if you go to like page twenty, for instance, that's parcel four, concept three, and they gave us a bunch of those, right? Um, so that we as a board would, and, and it might be that we do this with, as a joint meeting with the design review committee and give them a really solid grounding in what we're talking about, and then participate with them in a, a discussion of the relative merits of option one, option two, option three, for what they already gave us. Figure out from that, what do we think we want them to come back with for the rest of the street? Doesn't have to be three options. It could be a, um, uh, initially chosen direction. I just made that up.
Yeah, so I think that's a, I, I like that idea. I think that there is an underlying question of what we, in, what we want out of a change in zoning. I mean, this goes back to our, our, you know, does design come first, or does the, you know, what, what, what elements do we want to be, so the zoning doesn't give us the design, but the design, but you know, if we say we want a density of this much, let's say, let's let me page through here to where, where is the density? So let's go to one of these studies. So here we have a density of eighty-eight units per acre. Here it's a hundred and ten. I mean, what we decide is an appropriate density will, I think, be fundamental to what the design's gonna look like.
That's exactly what I was talking about. Going through concepts one, two, and three for each of the parcels, coming up with a board consensus, um, and perhaps doing it in conjunction with the design review committee. Um, one thing I don't know, I know we have, um, inclusive zoning laws in our town, so anything over six units has to have one unit of affordable housing, um, which is separate from three A, but it's still a relevant consideration. So we put all those in the mix.
Yeah, no, I, I, I was thinking, I, 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 I guess I didn't, I didn't completely understand your concept. I was thinking the board would do this before we went to design review, not in conjunction with them.
Well, we, we could also do it in conjunction with the Housing Partnership Board, because they would say, you know, this is how many units we're supposed to create in this town, um, to reach, uh, safe harbor and to reach and attain and, and sustain.
We know that, that's forty units a year.
So then what, what massing of density in what locations of North Main Street get us how far towards that goal, knowing that North Main Street is not the Panacea? But it can be part of the picture.
That's, that's, that's completely within our wheelhouse, though. That's, that's, the buck on that stops with the planning board.
Right. I, I, I think that, uh, it, it can hurt to have the design review, you know, uh, part of the process. Uh, I know that we had that conversation, uh, in other meetings. And they, they certainly would like it.
Yeah, it has to be part. It definitely has to be.
Part. It, it's, it's, it's a question of when do we bring them in? If we bring them in before we've decided on our density, then they're, it's, it's kind of a waste of their time, because they're gonna, as, as E Ching pointed out, we have optionitis here. We're gonna say, what do you think of this? Or what do you think of that? And they're gonna say, why don't you tell us what you underlying want, and then we can help you with the design, rather than giving us three options, knowing that only one of them is gonna survive.
So I'm coming out of that, Dab, with an idea that we would have an upcoming planning board meeting where we take a deep dive on each of the concepts for each of the parcels in this initial thing.
Oh, no, Sally, that would be way too long. No.
Or a comparison of each of the concepts for each parcel and say, this parcel seems like it would be good to do concept two. This parcel seems like it would be good to do concept four. You can't, that's not a feasible thing?
It seems like we would just go around in circles. No. I think that what some of these things are, I mean, could this be a PUD models, similar to say in the Central Business District, right? So like if you do mixed use, we want mixed use, say, we want, we want housing, we want, you know, up to ten percent inclusionary housing. We want, um, you know, hidden parking. And if you do all of that, you can increase your, you know, uh, FAR by X.
I, I don't wanna talk about it as FAR. I wanna talk about it as number of units. I don't want this to be a discussion about FAR.
So very quickly, so how, um, E Ching, you had asked a question of like, you know, where's the incentive? How does this work? And you, you just kinda answered your question, um, which is basically, so fifteen units per acre, which is what's required by section three A. It, it, it's actually not very much, and we were, ours is higher than that right now, right? We, we, we know that, but there's a lot of people saying, you know, trying to dump density there. It's like, it's already denser than that. So I, the idea is that if you do fifteen units per acre by right, which is what we have to do, um, then if you wanna go higher than that, you go like, well, then, you know, it has, you have to have a lot that's, whatever. In this case, it's two and a half acres. It probably wouldn't be that. But let's say it's, let's say it's one acre or one and a half acres or something, uh, along those lines. And then you have to follow all of these design guidelines, but then, yeah, you have a much higher density. It's just, you know, it's called a density bonus. I mean, that, that, that's simply, and it's similarly how it's gonna work. Uh, that's how it's all gonna work. That's the, that's how the whole, that's how, uh, yeah, that's how the, that is how the zoning will work in, you know, a year from now. It's gonna be an overlay of what's lower than what's now, just to be compliant. And then basically say, okay, if you want the bare minimum, you can do that bare minimum in terms of density. There's still design guidelines. But however, we can't really force a ridiculous amount on these buy right projects. They're just not. But it's like, if you basically say that, um, you can get a lot higher density, if you do follow these guidelines and you can go through like a PUD, um, that's exactly how this is gonna get sold.
So, all right, let's, I, I wanna go back, and this is actually before my time on the board, and Brian, you were there. Um, when the PUDs, when the design of downtown came through, that was the work of, of essentially Dennis Carlon, right?
He did a large portion of, of that. It was, it was basically, is there a similar situation in terms of, it was tech, kind of test fits that he did on a number of key locations? Um, uh, but it was him and actually a, uh, two other firms that, um, uh, answered the RFP that the planning board was looking at, and, um, they ended up going forward with Dennis Carlon, who ended up doing, um, the design guidelines for the Center Business District and several other projects in town.
The, the idea of the PUD and who, and, and the, the actual specification of the areas and the density, that came out of Dennis?
Dennis and his, and, and he did work with a couple other people, but yes, Dennis Carlon, and yeah, based on actual, um, you know, what's possible. Uh, yeah.
So this, um, so I think I'm wondering whether if we take that model, that provides us with an answer to E Ching's question of how do we move from these test fits to something that's we can work with, I guess. And maybe, so if we, if we take that model and we replace, not replace, but we say Form and Place has. not replace, but we say form and place has the same role as Dennis. That what we are then saying is that this phase three, which we discussed, is actually partly, maybe there's a phase three and phase four. And what phase three is, is taking these test fits with the input of the board and helping us formulate the particular things like the P U D and the design guidelines that go into that, which give us that map that we see of the C B D, which we can then write zoning to.
That feels really clear to me. I would love to hear from Kurt, if you followed that conversation just these past couple minutes, Kurt, like what you see as a, you know, um, developer or or investor in in property like that, what in the P U D example from the C B D, is this sort of the direction that one would use in order to incentivize people to start developing in the way that we want?
Yeah, let me, so it's interesting. I thought you were going in a different direction of what you're asking me, which is like, if yeah, I, I think not, I'm like, not in like my developer investor hat, but just like my, my planning town planner hat, like I, I, what, what you said, Yicheng, like what kicked started this conversation resonated with me completely. It's like, we're just like, I, I, I'm not clear to how you get to like the written document that actually like spells out the guidelines for like how we're meant to proceed and encourage the development. And that seemed to me what was missing in the conversation. So uh, not to be repetitive, I, I think the conversation we just had was really productive, and I think that should be, I think, yeah, what you just said is really positive, too. I think we're trying to get not just like to like this like imaging phase, like we're actually trying to get to written words that we can actually like bring to town meeting, get put in place that will actually encourage the kind of development that we think the town wants and needs. And and that's the piece that I guess, yeah, also wasn't clear to me how it fit in to what we've been talking about, to the proposal. I think in terms of like, I'd want to think a little bit more, I guess, about Yicheng, your question on, you know, what is the right incentive to investors and, you know, developers to try and encourage them to do what we're talking about. But I think providing a like clear roadmap that um, opens up the doors to, you know, increased density and development um, is, is what's going to attract, I think, investment to these areas. And I think we saw that with Converse Place, right? They were so fixated on maxing out the F A R. Sally, I know you don't want me to say F A R, but that, I mean, that's, that, that's a clear example of like, they saw an opportunity. And the opportunity and the way they're gonna make money is by maximizing the density on that site. And so they pursued it. And I think being thoughtful about the amount of density we want here and creating that roadmap and that pathway to getting it is going to be what I think attracts investment to this area.
Did you think that that, what exists now in the C B D, the, the P U D guidelines, was that a successful way of doing it? From, from a developer hat? Other documents like that, and were they different?
So I, I definitely, I, I don't, I have to admit, I mean, full disclosure, like, we don't do, like, in, in my professional life, like, we don't do a lot of development. So, and and largely because admittedly, we don't like the risk associated with this process with the fact that like you're going in front of local boards and trying to get consent for things. It always takes two or three times as long as you think it's gonna take, and you inevitably don't get what you want. Um, so we tend to shy away from that risk, but um, I, I think trying to anticipate what a developer is going to do and what they're gonna try and ask for, and try and just like make it clear in whatever we codify, I think, is going to, to help make our lives easier. Um, and also help make developers understand very clearly what is okay and what's gonna pass and and what's not. Um, and I think leaving, you know, trying to, again, make it as, as clear um, and articulate as, as possible is just gonna prevent ambiguity and and help get us to the outcome we're, we're looking for. And I think what's gonna ultimately be, I think, what falls on us is like, whether or not, when we get to that point, if like what we've created is like something that is like attractive to a developer and like can actually generate, you know, an appropriate return for the investment they, that we want them to put in.
So.
Well, Dave, I wanted to respond to one question that Yicheng asked.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Um, Yicheng, you were asking the question whether the whole P U D conceptual structure for C B D um, worked well for, for Winchester. And I think that, that um, it partially worked. Um, because P U D is, if I'm not mistaken, stands for a planned unified development.
I think P unit, right?
It's a planned unit development in a community of different types of homes, may include condominiums, commercial property, and single family homes. Most often, the predominant type of the P U D is a single family home.
Really? A single family?
According to uh, the Canadian or L L P.
It is a unit, plant unit development.
Say about that is that lot aggregation, I was thinking that lot aggregation was a critical element of the entire concept of P U D. And lot aggregation only worked on one of the three P U Ds in the Center Business District, which is where they aggregated lots at the hardware store. Um, there was no lot aggregation at Converse, and there was no lot aggregation at Waterfield.
Sally, Sally, there is no lot aggregation for Fells Hardware.
Well, they owned both of those lots?
That's a single lot. Yeah, I guess, yes. Yeah, they, they own both of those lots.
Right. So, so there, there was little or no lot aggregation, but because I thought the U stood for unified, I thought aggregation was central to the concept. If it's not, then I don't know how to answer the question, did the P U D concept serve us well?
Well, I think that, yeah, I mean, we've had, we've actually only had one real. So the, the Fells Hardware was not a, I don't believe it. Was it, was that a P U D, Brian?
No, it was just a regular special purpose.
Yeah, so we, the only P U D we've seen is the one at ten Converse, and so we still have a few other P U Ds, which are still lying fallow, as it were. Um, so.
Where are they? I didn't know that.
They're up on the other side of Main Street.
The larger, excuse me, the largest area of the P U D uh, is on the east side of Main Street uh, north of the Rotary. So that, that's by far the largest area.
Oh, I see. Right. Going all the way from the Rotary to Stop and Shop?
Yeah, it's only, yeah, on the side with the um, three gas, three gas station.
I, I think that um, the key point here is not whether we want a P U D or not. Because I think, and and pardon me for speaking with everyone, I don't know that we have enough understanding of everything that's all of the different vehicles we could use. The key is to recognize that we, we, we're trying to recognize what our circle of ignorance is, in a sense. We, we're trying to understand how little we know, and we need to find someone who can guide us through their, their knowledge. So what I'm, what I'm getting is that we really want to have a longer conversation with form and place, which goes beyond simply um, which takes us, I think, to at least four phases where after the, so we have to discuss what we're gonna do with the next fifteen grand, which may be that they continue doing similar test fits up North Main Street. Then the next phase after that will be them sitting down with us and coming up with specific um, vehicles for specific sites. So maybe a P U D is something useful, maybe there's some other tool which would um, provide us the, the development. So essentially helping us winnow down the options to what works. And so that would be kind of phase three. And at that point, we would, we would start working with legal to come up with the zoning, which describes that. And then their assistance with us in terms of visualizing that would be phase four. So rather than asking for the whole enchilada after phase two, we, we, we talk to them um, and say, hey, we just, we, we want you to continue doing what you're doing. And we're gonna invite you back for another thirty K at least to finish the project all the way to the end. Is that a reasonable summation of a way forward?
That sounds, I mean, I, I think, I think we'd like where they've taken us. We just want them to take us further.
So that is going to, of course, impact our budget. So if we've decided on that, then we're going to be looking at.
It's eighty, then it's eighty. It adds it, that it goes from twenty to thirty for the, for that project. So then it goes to eighty thousand for professional services.
Yep.
Isn't that where we were already?
No, we were at seventy, and then now we're at eighty, and now we're going from a one hundred and eighty thousand dollar budget to two forty seven.
And again, the case making is about the incredible development pressures and opportunities and needs that are attendant upon our town.
How did we go from one eighty to two forty? Oh, one eighty is what we had before?
One eighty was our like FY twenty three budget for with, for everything all in was one eighty.
Right, okay.
And now it's two forty seven.
Yeah. And then that, we're still, and we're gonna still ask for probably another thirty K to them for phase four. So that's, that's gonna chew up more of our budget later on. That will be probably in fiscal nine, whatever the heck fiscal.
Fiscal twenty four. Is that in fiscal twenty four?
No, this is fiscal, this is fiscal.
So this would be in fiscal twenty five.
Yeah.
I don't know how you spell fiscal. I spelled it with a P H.
No, that's physical.
P H Y.
P H Y, yes. That's exactly.
I C S.
Yes.
So, by the way, they're gonna be, just so we're clear, just um, they're most likely, you know, everyone is asking for a level service budget this year. Just, just, just so we're
I know there's a philosophical disconnect between what we're doing and what was presented to the department heads from FinCom. Um, and I don't really know the way around that, except to say that we've done as much as we can with extremely limited budgets. And we're falling farther and farther behind in terms of our commitment to our goals.
So I would, I would say that's the argument we make to FinCom. The, the, the thing we have to do is we need plan B. And so the question is, if we had to, if we had to, if we present our budget as we like it, and they say, nope, you can't do that, what do we do? So I think it comes down to.
They would just revert back to what they gave us last year is what they would do.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But I would, I would argue that we could make a counter offer rather than just accepting their, their forty five K. And so one of those counter offers could be that we decide that the White Industrial District takes a hiatus for a year. And instead of putting in thirty K to phase two of Holt and Swanton Cross, we use that for phase three of North Main Street.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah, I, I think try to, try to excel at one thing that, that we can, we can really bring forward.
I mean, I think, so you've, 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 Brian, you've included in that two hundred and forty K, the assistant planner position. Let's make the, I think, the wise assumption that that's not gonna fly. So what we're really looking at is a change in our professional services budget from forty five K to um, right now, if we include everything, it's forty five K up to seventy five, up to eighty K. So that is actually realistically what we're asking for, is an increase from forty five K to eighty K. And if we're pushed to the wall, I would say, okay, well, we can remove the Holt and Swanton Cross, which gets us the third, and then that will take us back down to fifty K. And that would, we would concentrate on North Main Street.
Um, yeah, I think doesn't, yeah, uh, you got a lot of time for the um, but I think the numbers are solid, um, which is good. But um, in terms of figuring out how that, the um, kind of the counter offer for FinCom, you have a decent amount of time for that.
Yeah, I mean, I feel much better going in and saying we're gonna ask for the assistant town planner. They're gonna say no. We're gonna say, yeah, we expected that. But now we're asking for eighty K in professional services. And then we can negotiate down from that bit by bit and see if we can get somewhere in the middle. If that's required. But obviously, we push for as much as we can. So I think the next question is, um, if we've made the um, if we come to a consensus upon making North Main Street our priority, then that means we're gonna go ahead and talk to form and place about turning this into at least a three-phase project. Um, and so that's something we need to talk about that with them, so they understand that there's a little more breathing room um, in terms of the money. And Brian, but, but we still have to ask them, what's the next thing we would like them to do? Is it to do test fits up North Main Street? Do we want them to concentrate on a particular area?
I mean, I think it makes sense to just kind of do the next chunk that um, but, you know, again, that kind of does depend on uh, you know.
Back to what the next chunk would be. Where is the, come on? Where does it go? Am I going back too far?
Uh, no, you just missed the parcels.
No, no, I was just gonna, this is the, this is, so they've done that big chunk to the south. So the next chunk could be perhaps swanton up to Woburn.
Yeah, the other end.
Because the ones in the middle are so constrained by, there's just not a lot you can do with those plots. They're tiny. So maybe our biggest bang for the buck is to look at.
Yeah, I don't know if they're gonna be able to do that much. I think it's, it's a question, I guess, that we can ask them.
Some of the um, plots are historic assets, so that's something that we should kind of have them address as well in terms of what we're gonna uh, what we're gonna at least develop, what we're gonna at least keep the form of, if not the interiors. Um, that, that I guess would be down the road, but it's certainly something that we should consider as we go forward.
They definitely consider that throughout all of this. It's like, it's real test fits in terms of whether they think that something will likely be there or not. And it's a, a lot of it's based upon the maps that from M A P C in terms of, in areas that were historic, were not areas for likely for change.
They did that, I, I'm gonna get it wrong. Which one was it? When they looked at the, this lot right here, um, they gave us, they, they gave us a couple where they maintained the historic.
Right, so they, see, they put it in gray. Sure.
Yeah, and they also, they looked at kind of, whoops, I forget where. They looked at developments which included the historic. And um, like this one, I think they, they, they said no historic, and then what the heck happened? Here, they include it and they built on top of it. So
Right.
Yeah, we would certainly encourage them to think of how to incorporate the existing historic properties in their view of how to do things. But also, you know, since we don't have really strong protection in this town for historical properties, um, we want them to also look at options. Um, because we may end up with something.
That'd be great.
Yeah. So why don't, um, so I guess the next step will be for um, Brian and I to reach out to form, oh, I'm sorry, we never did, we never did come to a consensus. Um, and I apologize. I got, uh, I, I feel like the uh, the dog in Up where someone said squirrel, where I said saw squirrel.
Well, it, it is, it is the time where you summarize, because we're almost on to our next segment.
Yeah. So I think if, if, if the next, the idea would be that we move on to this large section between Swanton and the Woburn line, um, we'll ask them what sort of, um, if they were to do the same level of detail as they did on the, the, the lower part of North Main, how far that would get them. But, and we would include in that conversation that we are going to be extending the contract to at least a third phase, which would help us make decisions.
And, and, and I would, I would add to that, the fine point that in that G B D three between Swanton and Woburn line, there's a very large property that is. there's a very large property that is shaded red for change unlikely, which means that, that, that kind of reduces the actual area of visualizing.
Good point, good point, so. Anyway, so.
The ones that are likely.
Okay, so if that's okay with everyone, and because I'm hosting, I cannot see everyone's face. I don't know why Zoom doesn't.
Yeah, but I'd like to, um, add also that we really didn't digest all the options either. But like Sally said, it might be helpful for them to hear from us and for us maybe each to go through them and to, to actually acknowledge some of the, the work that they've done and to identify the characteristics of these different options, right? And, and to give comments back to them, because I'm not sure that we, I mean, we didn't discuss it here, but you know, whether or not townhouses are better than, uh, you know, a, a three-story, um, building or four-story building, or what, whatever the characteristics that they presented are, right, what they see. But I, I don't think that we have time in these sorts of meetings to go through that together. But I think it would be helpful for them to hear it from us, for us to see each other and digest this.
So I think what I would suggest is that we, um, as we've run out of time this evening, that we have a, a, a really short discussion at our next meeting about the form, how we wanna convey our thoughts to them.
Yeah, that's a good, good strategy.
Because I know in the past, we have sent it to them individually. But I think if we spend the next couple of weeks thinking about this, and I think now that we have a path forward, it might be, it might be easier to come up with things to tell them. It certainly is for me. So yeah, so why don't we, we think about what we wanna do. I will, Brian and I hopefully can get ahold of them over the next couple of weeks. I will tell them what our plans are and that we are going to send them some detailed responses in the near future. And the actual format is something that we haven't figured out yet.
But to that, adding to that, I thought I heard Yiching say that she was thinking it would be really helpful for us to get, have a conversation with them. Um, and if it can't happen, and I think she was saying, Yiching, that it's too much to do in, in a meeting. So were you saying that it would be a series of individual meetings with Foreman Place?
Um, I thought more kind of similar to what we did in the first time we, um, gave comments to them, was just, uh, sort of individual comments to Brian and then, you know, I collect them, kind of a thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't have the time to, or they don't have, we don't have the money to pay them to have all of that individual time coming to all those individual meetings. But yeah, we can certainly give comments and they can digest those.
Okay, I think, I think I have an idea of where we're going with this. Which is good. It'll, so I think if, if everyone's okay with that discussion, we have one more thing on our agenda. And it's a short fifteen minutes talking about, um, planner transition. So.
It sounds like a huge topic that we need to power address in fifteen minutes.
We cannot, and so this is more of an update and, um, what the steps are coming ahead. Um, there's, so there's two parts to this. I'm gonna stop sharing, if that's okay with everyone.
Yes, please.
Excellent. So, uh, there are two parts of this, okay? So there is the back. There's the stuff happening behind the scenes in terms of making sure that, um, we understand the, the, the work that Brian has been doing and that we, we know, we, we have a, a, an idea of what all the loose ends are. So that's the part that is happening with Brian, Sally and myself behind the scenes. Um, and so I don't know that, that really is much we can talk about here, because it's all the things you would expect. Um, you know, talking to Suzanne Gill, figuring out what administrative tasks can be, can be transferred, what contacts need to be maintained, um, things like that. Um, we know there, I've spoken to, when Sally and I met with, um, Mark Tugid and Beth, um, whenever we did in the last week and a half, we discussed, um, some of the things that we depend upon Brian for doing. So for instance, analysis of the, um, Z B A permits and site plan reviews, which would, which we rely on him to go through them and analyze the drawings and look at and see how they, how they, um, corroborate how they fit our zoning. The idea would be that we could get, we would be able to hire someone on temporary basis sort of to help with those analyses. And so, um, a few years back, when we were hiring for our assistant town planner, we had for a very short time, there were a number of candidates who were interested in part-time work. The idea is that we might be, and there was, for instance, some, um, semi-retired planners who all just wanted to do the part-time work, and someone with that experience would help us do those analyses. The next big thing coming up, of course, is the, um, Waterfield Lot, which would come before this board. I know, Brian, you were thinking they would, they would file, um, before at the building department, but it seems like they first have to go through the select board this year to get select board approval. And then it would go to the building department for the permit application.
So, yeah, so, uh, technically, since this is in the C B D, it would actually end up going to Suzanne Gill in the engineering department as a C B D special permit. So this will not go through the building department, but yes, but you are correct in the fact that, uh, before they submit those plans to, uh, the, to, to the, uh, really to the planning board, it does need to be okayed by the select board, basically saying that it's in substantial conformity to the plan that, that was agreed upon, the, you know, previously, which, you know, it will. It's basically a, it's a, it's a provision of the land disposition agreement, the L D A, that they can't go for permitting unless they show the select board what we're talking about here.
Yeah, so, so the reason I bring that up is that Brian had been hoping to be able to review those plans um, prior to his leaving, but I don't know that that's going to be practical, so.
It might happen, it's possible. It's, it's totally possible, um, but, um, you know, we don't know yet.
Yeah.
Is it likely that, that you'll have someone, I'm sorry. I, I, the question, is it likely that we'll have someone on a temporary basis who can um, get us through in terms of the?
That's, it, it's, it's not that it's unlikely, I just don't know. So it, I, I've been, um, already, you know, been requested to at least see if that's even possible, uh, meaning, uh, for other people.
Well, all the stuff that you do that someone on, I mean, that the board would have to, so, I mean, someone would have to do, or, or, or is, I mean.
I think, yeah, I, I, I think that there would be some responsibilities that would potentially go to staff and then other responsibilities that would most likely, um, fall to the board in, in earnest. At this point, it would probably be a lot of D M and Sally, but they're obviously gonna need help as much as possible over those. You know, we're realistically talking two to four months.
Yeah, I think, I think for the, the technical support, I, I don't know, but I am very hopeful that we can find someone to help us work through the blueprints and the zoning and all of that. So that's my hope, because to be honest, the, the thought of waiting through all the blueprints and understanding everything is, is not my forte. And I don't think that the board, you know, we've, we've, we've taken Brian's expertise for granted, and of course, we, we, so I, I think we, I know that, that, the, the manager's office is supportive of us moving forward on that path. So that if we need, if we need funds to hire someone, then they will be made available on a temporary basis. So I, 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 I am, I plan on pursuing that with the board's okay, because I think that's the, possibly the only way we're gonna survive, um, until we get a new planner who will, of course, have to ramp up, and so they're, so.
I'm, I'm just concerned that a lot's gonna, uh, I mean, the ma- the demands on you guys as the leaders, um, I, I would not want those to get out of hand.
Oh, oh, you'll hear us scream, Nick, please, don't worry about that. Um, there's, I, I, yeah, I don't, I don't know what, yeah, Brian.
So as I say, one thing that I was gonna talk a, about that, um, so I did talk with the Chair of the Historical Commission, Jack Lemineje, as, um, I play a large role in the managing of these annual grants that they, um, apply for. And, uh, there's a lot of paperwork and admin associated with that. So he's going to be, I, I've set everything up that needs to get set up for the rest of the fiscal year, so there's not gonna be needing, you know, any contractor other weird other admin work. Jack is fine with, uh, with doing the, the rest of that. I think the one thing to quickly talk about is, uh, specifically the local historic district study committee for Sims Corner. So this, this is, uh, kind of a project that completely fell to the wayside during, uh, during COVID, and it still hasn't come out, uh, basically over the past year where it potentially could have, but for a number of reasons. Some of it was we were waiting for some survey and planning work to be done. Um, but right now that, uh, is gonna try to get revived. Uh, and I was thinking, I know Nick and Kurt, I believe you guys had talked about, um, helping out. And that's, that's one thing that's going to need help in terms of getting off the ground. So in terms of alleviating anything off of D M and Sally, that's definitely one project that is going to need some blood.
Is, is, is one of those demands gonna be simply getting grouped together?
Yeah, a lot of it is, uh, is, is, is physically, yeah, physically doing it, um, and, and I think the idea was to have a kickoff event of the neighborhood to try to get them educated about exactly what type of, uh, of gem of a neighborhood that they live in. Because a lot of people think of it as, oh, this is really cool, but they don't really necessarily think of it as, as historic. They're like, why aren't you doing the flats, or why weren't you doing some other place? And then when we start teaching, uh, or not, I shouldn't say teaching, when we just start having conversations with the neighborhood, we've already seen that they, um, you know, it's just, it, it, it becomes even more special to them in terms of, you know, just letting the truth out. So the idea is that, uh, but yes, organizing in an event, um, getting, getting the meetings going up and running again. Um, you know, the admin associated with that, um, is, is certainly gonna be important over the next, realistically, you know, three to six months.
I have a question about that, Brian. I'm sorry, D M, oh, wait.
I, I was just going to say that I've al- I've also spoken with Jack, and this, this, the, the support that Brian gives historical came up in Sally and mine's discussion with the town manager's office. And they are also amenable to hiring someone to do some of that. Um, and it was, there is a question as to, because apparently that L H D effort can't be led by the Historical Commission. So a question of who can be a proxy for the town, and so at least one name came up of a person who, a professional in the area who would be of help. So I think there is, there's also support there that we can go for.
Yeah, we've really enjoyed Brian, uh, on the Historical Commission as the liaison. Uh, he's gonna be sorely missed there. So hopefully we can, uh, we can figure that out going forward.
Yeah, I, I think Sally, you wanted to say something, right?
No, I just had a question about Sims Corner, and Brian, help me, because I don't know if I have, if I'm remembering the sequence or the outcome. The last thing I knew was that there were several homeowners who were very interested in, in having their house be part of the local historic district and possibly an equal number of homeowners who were not, and it was resulting in a patchwork quilt district. And there was some determination at the state level that that doesn't work, or I don't know. And so kind of that's the last thing I knew.
Um, you know, that's, that's a pretty good, you know, that's a pretty accurate description of, uh, of, of, of the history of it. I think, um, you know, there was, there were several, uh, I want to actually, not so, there was one or two public meetings that, uh, that this was talked about.
Right.
And the idea was to first start doing more outreach, because like I said, there was a lot of people that didn't, that didn't understand the significance of the neighborhood.
Okay, so that's the phase that this is in.
Yeah, so the idea is that, is that like, okay, two steps backward, let's do more outreach and, and, um, because basically what everyone found out, and we found out, you know, to our face, is that most of these L H D efforts, oh, like nearly all of them, so it's the large majority of them. They're successful when it's from a ground swelling up from the neighborhood. Not, not the, you know, and this was a small ground swelling, but most of the neighborhood is like, you know, i- is, is uninterested, not that they don't care uh, uh, about their neighborhood, but they just don't see it as a problem, you know, they don't see it as a fear of demolition. Whereas there's some areas of that neighborhood that are seeing the demolition fears, uh, in real, you know, in real time.
I think what prompted it was a house on Grove Street that, um, the people had bought it, they were on demo delay, and then they decided to move. Is that right?
It was a Greer Vogel house, uh, that they, yeah, yeah.
If I could, if I could ask us to, um, we will discuss the Sims Corner L H D in detail later. We have two minutes left. Um, I, I want to bring you up a couple more things up to date with this transition process. So, um, the position description that we worked on about six months ago now is, um, it, we, we finally got, it, the town manager's office wanted to review it. We finally managed to connect whenever we had the meeting with Beth and Mark. And they had a, um, what I think is, to them an important, but to us a minor correction in terms of being explicit that the responsibilities toward, of the planner are limited to the purview of the planning board. Um, so it was, I thought it was self-evident, they wanted it to be in there in writing, so there was a very small change. Um, I didn't think it made any difference to the overall, um, framework that we had set up.
Now, how does that impact, uh, the services that Brian provided um, to the Historical Commission? Because sort of as, as a member of the planning board, I'm also involved in the Historical Commission. And I, I.
That's, that's, that's. So that's a separate issue in terms of what the duties, what the, the specific. So there's a difference between what the position dis- description, which is sort of the overall framework, and then the explicit duties of the planner, which we would, which we write down when we essentially write the goals and requirements for how the planner, you know, everything goes into the annual review is based upon, you have to do this, you have to do that, these are your goals for the next year. That in my, I mean, that I think is where we write down explicit duties. And I think there's also, um, so that's a separate thing from the position description, which as far as this board was concerned, we'd settled on months ago. So that is now, so the, the edits have been made to that, and it has to go through the Personnel Board, which unfortunately was originally scheduled for this evening, where there's obviously a conflict, I can't be there. But it will now be coming forward next Tuesday before the Personnel Board. I presume that they will, um, agree to it, in which case we can then begin the search process. So Brian has tendered his resignation with date certain, which means that we can actually start looking. I will write color commentary, as Beth so well put it, to accompany the position description describing Winchester as a town, the different entities within town government that the planner operates in, um, some particulars about our history and development challenges and housing challenges. Those are the things that will give a better picture of the context of the job. And I will be working with Michael Town, who is in the H R department, because it all has to go through him for the posting. So with any luck, um, that will be, I could get that done by our next meeting in two weeks. Um, because the, the planning, the, the position description won't be, um, finalized or, or approved by the Personnel Board next week. So that will be put before you folks for your approval in a couple of weeks, which means at that point, we can probably start the search.
But you could start the search as soon as Brian, I guess.
We can, we could start today, but we have nothing to present them. We don't have a position. We can, we could start today, but we have nothing to present them. We don't have a position description. We certainly don't want to give them.
The position description doesn't have to be the as a legal document that'll have to be passed at the town meeting in the spring.
No, no, it doesn't, but we do have to have it finalized by the personnel board.
In order to go out to the newspapers and.
Right, right, it doesn't have to go towards spring. Yeah, the position description has nothing to do with.
Those are two separate doc, one's a legal document and one is an advertising document.
I'm sorry, I'm really confused about this. What does town meeting?
The town meeting is not, yeah, I I keep trying to say this, town meeting is not involved with the position description.
Right, right, that's correct.
Yeah, the position description is our baby. It's what we decide as to what we want the town planner to do. And and we've got that, and so then the next, so we just have, because we changed it, it just has to go through the personnel board for approval, because that's just the way you do it. So I don't see there, I don't see any obstacles to getting to starting to advertise in a couple of weeks. And then I.
I was, I had suggested to you earlier, and maybe others on the board would be interested to just put some feelers out or do some testing themselves to find the websites where town planners are, positions are often found, either in Massachusetts or across the country, if someone wanted to move from, you know, somewhere else. So I just don't know where there's, with the posting locations is what my point was.
Yeah, so so that, if people want to do that investigation, and Brian, we're gonna reach out to you. One of our, our action items from our meeting with the town manager's office was to talk to you about other places to advertise. So the next step after that is to make a decision on how we're going to run the selection process. And I know that the the Chair of the Historical Commission, Jack Lemineje, would love to be involved. As I, and I believe that we should also involve the principals within Town Hall that have such a close working relationship with the planning department. So that would be engineering, building, town managers. And it's not that they, we are the deciding body, but they, their input on how a particular candidate would work with them well, or they obviously have a better idea of what they need, so. Yeah, so the question is, how do we manage that?
It seems a little more impartial in a way to to have these outside, you know.
Yeah, so so the 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 interviews are going to be public. And so the question is, how do we enable all of these interested parties to be part of that process? And we obviously are not gonna come to a decision tonight. But I just wanna let you know that I think that's, should be an important part of our, of we need to receive input from them, so we'll figure it out. So our next meeting, we'll set, I believe we'll have time, our next meeting, I will make sure, I don't think our agenda is completely filled up. So on our next meeting, we'll set aside time to discuss that process.
Great, that's great.
Brian, I I was in your calendar, the planning board calendar today, and I saw that there weren't agenda items tentatively penciled in, in those calendar entries. I didn't see them.
I put some in myself for the thirteenth. We have a meeting with people from Mount Vernon on the thirteenth, and I have to get back to them, shoot. Okay, so we did.
Maybe I was looking at it.
Yeah, you need to go, don't look at Brian's calendar, look at the planning.
It was the planning board calendar and I would scroll up to the top.
Yeah, yeah, so now I've changed that.
Okay.
Okay, so it was, it wa, it wasn't at the top, the notes, so I just put them out there. So it's ZBA petitions and ten to sixteen Mount Vernon Street, those are the two things that are on the agenda for next time.
And we have to, and for some reason, I just got it canceled for our meeting today from you, Brian. Okay, that's weird.
So I'm in it, I'm not seeing them, I'm sorry, I'll just have to.
So we we will, yeah, so I will, I will make sure that's on our agenda. Other than that, I don't think there's a lot to update you folks on. But we will figure out, hopefully over the next several weeks, those areas where, you know, we're gonna have to work together as a team and those areas where we can't, so.
But, you know, sorry, this is gonna take thirty seconds, but I think just to be clear, sorry, not to be clear, just to be sure, I think we should, there should be a vote of the planning board to approve a budget of two forty-seven, three, three, one. And if someone just. Yeah, I will, I will put it. Yeah, that's the actual.
Thank you for doing that, Brian.
Yeah, just to make sure, I don't think it's necessary, but just in case it is, so it was, yeah, the the number that I said was correct and it was, it was.
Can you scroll to the top so we can see the whole thing?
Sure.
Oh, now you can't see the bottom, but whatever, okay. Whatever.
It's, it's, we assume there's no, that the numbers are all, are all okay.
Yeah, I can't see the, the, the personnel line now. The one five oh nine three one, okay.
Okay, we've had a, we've had a, a, a. Roll call vote, please. Oh, discussion, I think we've discussed this already. Let's do a roll call vote, Kurt. Uh, Nick.
Aye.
Yicheng.
Aye.
Sally.
Aye.
And I say aye as well. Aye, 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 okay, and now we're gonna take up Nick's.
Unanimous second.
Unanimous second, roll call, Kurt.
Aye.
Nick.
Aye.
Yicheng.
Aye.
Sally.
Aye.
And I, DMC, I as well, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you to Nancy, our recording secretary. Thank you for Brian Mander, who once again stuck through this for. Wrong with you. Richard, where we are, thank you, and thank you to our other two guests who showed up.
Laura and Maureen, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Brian, and thank you, Wind Cam, and we will see you all in a couple of weeks. Have a great two weeks.